Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board. This evening, June 16th, having a public hearing on Val and Jennifer Bickford, 153 Buzzell Road, map 216-002. It is a conditional use application to process and sell firewood. The time is 6:38. Good evening, Val. Would you please recap for everyone what you plan to do?
Yeah, I'm just looking to get a permit to sell some firewood. I'm not going to have any signs or anything like that. But roughly, last year was about 170 cords. The year before that was 130. It roughly turns into a little over 200 hours a year. And other than that, it's pretty much just in and out of just cutting the wood. I don't know if there's any questions anybody wants. I'm willing to answer.
Okay. Willing to...Ken?
How was the operation, Val?
I'm thinking 7 to 4 o'clock maybe during the week. And then on Saturday and Sunday, 9 to noon.
Well, I'm your next-door neighbor, and I'm all in favor of this.
Excuse me, sir. May I have your name, please?
David Hobart.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart.
630 Guns Ridge Road, actually.
Thank you.
I'll second. I'm up diagonally across the street from you, and I got no issues at all. Carry on.
And that's Ryan?
Yep, Ryan Gleason, 174 Buzzell Road.
Anything else either one of you would like to add? Anyone else speaking for Mr. Bickford? Please raise your hand so our host can see you. Mr. Murray, are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. That was interesting.
Joyce, I do not see any hands going up anymore.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I would like to go to the board now. Any questions from the board? Ken?
Are you closing the public hearing?
I would like to hear if the board has anything before we do. Seeing no hands from the board at this point, I'm closing the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Thank you, Mr. Hobart.
Right here.
And it is 6:41. We'll close the public hearing. Okay, this evening, we have a full complement here. So it is not necessary to designate an alternate. Now, we approve...I'd like to motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting, the July 9th meeting.
I make a motion to approve July 2nd.
No, the last meeting was July 9th.
Was it?
Yep.
July 9th minutes to 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? The chair would like to make a note. There should be a correction made to these minutes. And under the heading, it says July 2nd, 2020 Zoom meeting. The correct date, as it is noted on the bottom of the paper, is July 9th, 2020. And we should have that corrected, please. All in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Gavin?
I wasn't at the meeting. I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis? The chair votes yes.
Thank you. I know. I know.
Okay. On to old business. Back to Val Bickford.
Yes.
I'd like to go to the board, actually, to see, Val, what they have for you.
Okay.
Okay. Where can we start? Gavin, have you anything about this conditional use application?
I think we did a pretty thorough job two weeks ago. I was wondering if he did anything with his extra bark that piled up.
I'm sorry, I lost the last word you said. Extra?
Bark.
Thank you. Val, is there something you can answer?
I pretty much...the only thing I have left over is chips. And I've been using them for some erosion control on my other piece of property down on Lakeside, all the way down the end for now. And I really don't have that much. I burned some, and I have some extra spot over the bank that I pushed some over. But I mean, it's really not that much. But I mean, I don't know. Other than that, I mean, I don't have it all to offer or anything. That's where we're at.
Okay. Leslie?
I don't have any questions. I'm familiar with his operation, so I'm comfortable with what he's doing.
Jim?
I took a ride up and drove by. I'm very happy with his operation. No questions.
I'm all set. I had two opportunities to go up and do a drive-by. It looked fine. And I saw it when I was trying to compile my papers for this evening's meeting. I saw a conditional use plan that had been kind of filled up as preliminary to tonight's meeting. I'm wondering if anybody's got that in their file that can give me a date on the heading for that. This was a first go-round in terms of checking the conditional use permit apps, if you know what I'm saying.
That would have been, I believe...yeah, that would have been...
My second.
Thank you. What's the header read?
I don't have the paper right in front of me, but it was July 2nd.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dennis?
No.
Val? Storage of anything you have there? Any salt storage, anything of that nature that could leach into the ground?
As far as...I have been taking care of a few of the roads down the street as plowing. And I do have a bin with sand in it. I did about 80 tons of sand. And when I did, I mixed in 8 to 9 ton of salt, just so it wouldn't freeze. So I do have that out back in one of the bins. But as far as runoff, I pretty much used it all. So I think I might have maybe 20 ton left of the actual sand. So I don't know what that comes out to with salt, but roughly a quarter left. And it's just to keep it from freezing. It's pretty much all I used the salt that's in there for. But that's, you know, that's different from the wood. But I mean, I do have it out back. I've been taking care of Lakeside and Langley Chores down there. And I keep the salt to a minimum, but I just got to have a little bit in there so it doesn't freeze. There's nothing I can do about it. I mean, if not, I wouldn't be able to get the salt out of there. I mean, sand would be frozen.
Right. Okay, Ken?
Probably a condition that the salt's stored with best management practice. That could be you may have to either pave or pour a concrete slab underneath that area where it's salt, or just limit the storage.
Okay.
Okay.
Like I said, I got roughly maybe one or two truckloads out there now. And like I said, the salt was under 9 ton when I got it. So there's really...it's very limited of what's in there. That stuff's expensive.
Right. Right. Okay.
No, that's all I was going to ask, Joyce, if it had a solid bottom under it. Like, I believe if you're storing that like that, I think it's pretty quiet. Either cement or impervious bottom under it.
Do I need a permit to put a bottom in it?
No.
But probably as we move to the conditions with it, it would be if you store salt on site, it'll be stored with the best management practices.
Right, I'll do that. But I mean, do I need a permit to find a fat pad coming in and pour a floor down there?
No.
No?
Okay. We'll just...we'll review it when you do it. That way, there we know that slab's underneath, and we'll just have to review what needs to be done to store the salt.
All right. Yep.
Okay. Anything else with Mr. Bickford?
We're going to approve this project tonight.
Looking at the rest of the board. Tom?
I have one question that maybe has already been posed, but Val, do you have any fuel storage on site? How is that?
No, I have a...I just have a small skid tank, a 50-gallon skid tank in the back of my pickup.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
I would like to put this behind us tonight. Great.
I think so, too.
Make a motion.
Yeah, then let's make a motion to do what Boyd wants to do.
I make a motion to approve...
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I missed you.
Okay, sorry about that.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use application to Val and Jennifer Bickford, 153 Buzzell Road, map 216-002, to process and sell firewood.
Tom, your hand is up.
Shouldn't we go through the standards and check off the boxes which would suffice our findings of fact?
I believe we did that two weeks ago. Yeah, we did do that already. We did that two weeks ago.
I see that we did it on June 1st, but I...okay, I'm missing some paperwork here.
Sorry to hear that.
Nothing new.
Madam Chairman, I'd second Dennis's motion.
Thank you. Ken?
Just to clarify the conditions on that, hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7 to 4; Saturday and Sunday, 9 to 12. We didn't talk employees, but no employees, Val?
No.
No employees? If salt is to be stored on site, it'd be with best management practices.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else? We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Yes, absolutely, Gavin.
I think we had a condition of a fire extinguisher on the processor itself.
Yeah, I'll put one on it. I have one in the truck, but I don't actually have one on it. But I mean, I can put one on it.
Yeah, we did speak of that.
Yeah, I have one in the garage. I have one in the truck, but I don't actually have one physically on it. But I mean, I can put one on it.
Right. Well, you know how fast you have to move if something untoward happens.
Yep.
You really have to move. And something that's only three feet from your hand can be a mile away when you want it.
That's for sure.
Yeah, thanks for that. Okay. Is there anything else before I take a vote? Jim?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes. One of us...we have to select an alternative.
Yeah. We're going...I am abstaining. You have the 5-0.
Okay, thanks.
Takes care of it. Okay, Val?
Yes.
Do come into the office, see Ken and the girls get your permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Yep.
You're very welcome.
Yep.
You, too. Have a very good night.
Yep, bye.
Bye-bye. Everybody, I want to make sure...I know there has been some talk with when and how we get our papers, and what is in our packages and what is not. So I would just like to remind everybody to try and make sure that we have everything that come in our packets. And if you get a call from Christina or someone that there's more, make an effort to get it so we can have it at our meetings. This, you know, until February, we were sitting in an office together in a conference room. If something came in late, we all had it. Now, if something comes in late, we don't all have it. And it may be put off for a week before we have it. That's the way it goes. We can't do better. We are moving on to Grammy Rose LLC, Route 109, map 233-004, site plan review application for dog rescue and sanctuary, mini golf course, and an ice cream shop. And we do, and I hope you all got your new maps we had asked for. You remember, I asked you all to stop by and pick them up before, you know, you got to your respective computers and where you're using them. So...
Joyce, what's the ID number on that?
On what?
That new plot plan.
It just came in this afternoon.
Oh.
I remember yesterday I said to stop by the office. Went to Tom's house.
If somebody can turn on my screen share, I can post up the plan on the screen.
Thank you, Dana. Tom, did you pick it up this afternoon before you went to Tom's house?
No.
Okay. Well, Dana's going to share one via screen share. Dan or Jennifer, would you...thank you. Dana Libby will do the screen share.
Joyce, I do have one that's dated 1520. If Dana's kind enough, you could just help me out with the differences between that first one and the one that we're reviewing tonight.
Is the screen share up now?
It is up now.
Okay. So what we did was we reconfigured the dog cottages to match the floor plans that were given to you. The floor plans that were given to you were a little larger than the footprints that we originally posed. So we have shrunk the cabins down, the four of them that are small, smaller. And then we have two large buildings that are out near the road. We've actually reconfigured those larger buildings to face the miniature golf course.
When you say the road, you're talking about the driveway.
That's correct. The circle.
Yes.
The two end ones, the north and the south, the ones closest to the employee parking. We faced those buildings toward the employee parking.
Right. And I see those are...they're somewhat easier to read. A little over 1,500 square feet. And the others are less than 1,000 square feet.
Correct. So the overall adage to this square footage was about 200 square feet of building.
I see that 217 square feet of building, I believe.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, okay.
We also widened the entrance to the circle to accommodate a fire truck turnaround.
Excellent.
That seemed to be a little bit of a concern at the last meeting.
Correct.
We've also...the adoption center and the ice cream shop, those are now the full plans that were given to you before the last meeting.
Right.
And also, the maintenance building's been revised to show the bigger size. It's a new dumpster location and the pavement orientation around the maintenance building. Other than that, that's pretty much it, the changes since the last time we talked. I have talked to the engineer because there's an overall increase of about 1,000 square foot of impervious area. And he checked the numbers for the drainage structures, and those structures will accommodate that extra square footage. So we also sent off the DOT entrance permit to DOT. That went out in the mail Tuesday. That's a condition that we're going to ask for from the board that we approve, in addition to we get that entrance permit. The other condition that we're asking for is that the engineer, because we repositioned some of these buildings and widened the pavement at the circle, the engineer has to do some regrading for the drainage. And he'll be working on those plans, and as soon as he gets them done, we'll issue a final high copy set to the town.
Okay. When do you think that would be?
Not sure. My guess, probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. If all of this goes ahead, when would you start construction?
I guess I'm going to let Jim talk to that and/or Scott.
Scott McLeod, Ashco Construction, speaking. We'd like to start as approval we put in place. We'd like to get trees cleared and proceed with roughing in, grading to get in, so we can start working on the property. I want to get a good start before winter kicks in.
Okay.
Days are getting shorter.
Oh, don't rush it, please.
Oh, I'm not trying to, but they're going the other way now.
Don't let the rain scare you. We have questions from the board.
I see on the new plans that you didn't address the islands in the parking lot, if required.
You are correct. So once again, we are going to add one at the first handicap parking spot in front of the ice cream shop. I guess that would make that a condition, but we'll just add that in, and I'll supply the plans to the town.
No, I see that's in the plan, where you have 11 parking spaces on that upper side of the island, and you can only have 10. Unless I missed something.
I'd like not to have to put two islands if we can get away with it. I mean, the sole purpose of the islands is to break up the landscape of the parking area. So one in the middle here would probably do a good job of doing that.
I'm not disagreeing with you, what you're saying. I'm just going by what the ordinance says.
Is there any flexibility with that, is the board...
I'm willing to do whatever the board wants to do.
Would it be a subdivision reg, Joyce?
No, this isn't a subdivision.
No, I'm saying, would that regulation be in the subdivision regs? Or is it a zoning ordinance item? Then...
I believe it's zoning. I'm looking it up right now.
It's in good neighbor policy.
Good neighbor policy.
Which is in zoning. That's why we talked about getting it out of the zoning, so you guys can waive it more.
Exactly. I'm looking at the page right now, guys.
Ken's right. That was our intention this year, to get that out of there, but we didn't make any of our changes to town meeting. So nothing to change.
So it sounds like it's not something that we can ask the board for, or there's any room to bend on?
Well...
I mean, if it's in the ordinance, I understand, because you don't waive any of that.
Yeah, I counted, when you go in the driveway on the right, I counted 12 parking places. Somebody tell me if I'm right or wrong.
There's 13 before the handicap.
12 or 13. How many did you say? 13?
Yes, 13, just before the handicap. So if we took that 13 spot and made it an island, that would be 12.
Right.
The upper one, I think, has got 11.
The upper one? 1, 2, 3...
Including the handicap, there would be 13.
If I don't include the handicap, I've got 11 here. I've got 10 here. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10.
But the problem is that there's no exception in there for handicap, parking places, parking slots. The only difference is your handicap has to be bigger.
Right.
Okay. So the question then becomes, do we have to make it the full stall of a parking area as far as 24-foot deep? Can we go something a little narrower?
For your handicap, you've got to go with...
No, no, no. I'm talking the depth of the parking stall. Right now is 24 feet.
Right.
It's pretty long. So if the island was 20, is that okay with the board? I'm just trying not to restrict the traffic flow around those islands.
All it says in the ordinance is a beach island. It doesn't say how big it's going to be.
Right.
Well, I guess at this point...
Leslie, can you look in your book for that as well, please?
Yeah, let me grab it.
Ken?
It may be something that you want to install on top of the paving, Dana, in case the ordinance changed, because it's going to make snow removal totally different than without it. The board had the intention to get that out of there, so if it was...if you did the paving and then put the...I treated six pice sticks with a vegetated buffer in it, and if the rules changed, then maybe it's something, if it wasn't working out for snow removal, it could be removed in the future.
So you're saying you could use temporary plantings for the summers, spring, summer, fall months, and then remove those temporary plantings for the...
The board had the intention to get that out of there, so if it was, if you did the paving and then put the... You treated six pice sticks with a vegetated buffer in it, and if the rules changed, then maybe it's something, if it wasn't working out for snow removal, it could be removed in the future.
Are you saying you could use temporary plantings for the summers, spring, summer, fall months, and then remove those temporary plantings for the...
If the ordinance changed, you could remove it, but that would be a thought anyways, if the board agreed with it.
If you were to do some, just as you said, some, say that, when you're going in from 109 on the right, that very first parking lot, parking space.
Yep.
If you were to put some lovely container flowers in there for the spring and summer and fall.
Yep. So, I would probably go, there probably would be two areas on the right-hand side, just to meet your zoning requirement.
Right.
I probably would put them at the 10 foot, the 10 spaces. So, if you pop the right-hand side to the first 10 spaces, and then we put some temporary plantings, like whiskey barrels or flowers or whatever, and do the same thing the next 10 up.
Right.
That way, then in the wintertime, they can be removed, so that they can plow the parking lot efficiently.
Correct. Okay, let's go to the board. Leslie, what do you think of that sort of a...
I think that would be the most advantage, to the advantage of the applicant, and still meeting our ordinance, so I would be in favor of that.
Jim, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any issues with that due to the fact that we, if we didn't have the coronavirus issue, that would have been already out of the regulations, but it wasn't voted on. We've talked about doing that, taking that pot out. So I wouldn't have any problems with a temporary type of the setup.
Gavin?
Believe this would still be permanent, because this is a commercial development.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
This would still be permanent, even if it had gone through town meeting, because it's a commercial development. There still needs to be an island, well, two islands there.
Right.
We weren't going to take the good neighbor policy out entirely, we're going to make it applicable to commercial development, which this is.
I'm reading the... The snow.
In the winter, when they need to remove the snow, the ice cream and the mini golf would be closed anyway, so the need for all that parking really isn't required.
What's the total number of parking places?
Forty-five?
Yeah, I think it was, if I recall, it was like 45 total.
Forty-five total.
If I recall, let me add them up. There's 52 total, and seven of them are dedicated for employees.
Fifty-two total, seven for employees. Is this on the lower left, is that the employee parking?
No, the employee parking is all the way to the end of the parking on the right, they're all tabled employee space.
Okay.
They're up by the dog cottages.
Yep. Oh yeah, I see them marked well, thank you. I'm trying to figure out something we could work with you with. So what do we got, we have 20, how many on this side?
Twenty-three on that right-hand side.
Twenty-three on the right-hand side, and 11 on the left. And on the bottom, we've got, one, two, three, four, five, six, another 12? No, not 12.
Well, six, six in each aisle. In front of the adoption center?
Yeah, by the adoption center.
Right, there's six in each aisle.
Six, 12 and a... 11 and a handicap.
Correct. But I think the intent of that is, if you have a parking lot, it's line of the parking that's more than 10. That little parking area, the aisles themselves only have six each.
Right, I see that.
There's not really a place to put a island.
That wouldn't require one there, anyway.
I don't believe that would require one, but I'm trying to think if a berm would work. Ken, would a berm, according to our book, would a berm work as well as an island?
Yeah, I think it really just says island, so whatever the board's comfortable with, you've got a lot of leeway with that. The whiskey barrels were a good idea with the vegetation in it.
Now, I've got no issue with a temporary... Barrel, whatever. It just, whether, this is my opinion, whether we agree with the wording of the ordinance or not is irrelevant. We just have to follow it.
Right. If we, Gavin?
I think if these islands were connected to the ground, it would be a great way to get rid of excess water coming off the parking lots and provide some shade to cool down the parking lot with people in the cars potentially waiting or with animals in the vehicles.
Just one quick question about the drainage, the engineers have already graded this parking lot as a fully paved, so if we start putting boots in the parking area, that's going to intercept water from where it should be going. So, basically, the sidewalk area being used as gutters to collect the water, and it's driving it to the catch basins. So if we put an island in there, that's going to intercept water.
I see what you're saying there. Yeah, Gavin, again.
I don't think this is a big deal, we'll just add a couple of islands and move on to other parts of this application.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to do. Back to, I have to flip screens to see you all, guys, so I don't want to see you all at one time.
Joyce?
Yes, Dennis?
There's a, the verbiage in the ordinance, does it say? They're differentiating that between permanent and temporary on the island.
What is the citation to that, Joyce?
It's on page 62, it does not say it has to be permanent.
So we can use our own discretion, if it's not.
Yes, I would think so.
Yeah, page 62, Tom.
And what's the number of the, 5.11.1?
Point 1.3.
Thirteen.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Dana, there's no provision here with drainage, I forget what the terminology is, parking areas that can be drained because of the materials that are used to make them. Does that give us any more rope to try and solve this?
I didn't quite catch what you're saying, Tom.
The, a number of years ago, we were introduced to some paving materials that allowed the water to percolate down through them.
Forest paving?
Yeah. Would that provide a solution anywhere?
My guess is probably not, because in the wintertime, that would be frozen.
Right.
There's at least one for every 20 spaces.
Right, so it has to be at the 10.
Yeah.
You know, in the middle.
Yeah. Actually, reading this, guys, I think the last line is pretty interesting, there must be at least one island for every 20 spaces. Landscaping, screen, parking area for adjacent residential uses and from the street. Well, I didn't mean that one, but there must be at least one island for every 20 spaces. Now, looking at your, if it's at the 10 spot, I wouldn't have a problem if you put that on either side of the handicap areas, making making use of that as an island, given wider space to the handicap areas.
Kenny, can you point that out for us?
I'm assuming that she's talking about right here.
Correct.
Once again, is that going to be temporary or permanent?
I'm leaning towards temporary.
Okay.
But this has to be a board decision, you know that. Gavin?
Yes, I'm looking at the line right before you, what you read, Joyce. The parking lot containing 10 or more parking spaces must include one or more landscaped islands. That sounds permanent to me.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Gavin, I'm looking for some wiggle room.
This isn't a lot to ask.
That could be. I'll tell you, I don't want to get stuck on this particular point. I really don't. And, I mean, the other thing to do, which we've done in the past, is theoretically, how often do you think you're going to have 45 parking places filled? I know you would like to be 100% every day, but truly, how often do you think you would need every one of those parking places?
The truth is that they probably will never be filled 100%. Mini golf and ice cream are most likely going to be nighttime business, and in that timeframe, the adoption center most likely will be closed.
Correct, so would it be a very big hardship simply to ax one on each side? Bring it?
Well, we only need to supply one for the right-hand side. So, if we can, I'd like to put it before the handicap parking. So, I guess the question is whether the board will allow temporary or permanent?
I'm asking you if you would consider taking out one parking place.
Yes, I have an idea.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, you just said they had an idea.
Scott, sorry.
Okay, let me switch my screen, okay, Scott.
The island, is there, does it call out the required length of the island? Because if these spaces are 24 feet deep, if we brought an island out roughly eight, maybe 10 feet, maybe that spot becomes usable for a couple of motorcycles, and we can still get around it in the wintertime, it could be permanent. It doesn't hinder the, you know, 24 feet out is little, that's a little bit much. But if it was, you know, eight or 10 feet, then it would have the island, it could be then some shrubs or whatever in there, and that might solve the problem.
All it says, Scott, is it's got to be an island, it does not say...
Yeah.
Gavin, your hand's up.
There is no size requirement, I think that's a good idea.
I'm going to check my other page of people, please. All right. I don't have a problem with that idea, I think that's a good idea, Scott. Leslie, have you any thought on that?
I kind of like it.
There you go, there you go. Ken, how does that seem to fit in the scheme of things that you would...
I've already written it down. 10-foot island.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, from my board, would we think that's all a good idea? This is not a vote, I want to know what your ideas, if you believe this is a good way of going. Yes.
Looks fine to me.
Thank you, Tom. Jim?
I'm with me.
Okay. Leslie, you said it was good.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, and Gavin, you said you were good with it?
I think the math tells us we need two islands like that.
Okay, okay. But the 10-foot...
It said one every 20 feet.
Yes, the size is great.
Okay. We'll get this part down. Dennis?
Yeah.
Fine, great. Dana, you're with us on this?
Yes, but we're doing one, correct?
It's got to be two.
The requirement is one per 20 spaces.
Parking lot containing 10 or more parking space must include one or more landscaped islands within the interior of the lot. There must be at least one island for every 20 spaces. So what is the total number of islands of parking places in that?
Twenty-three on that side.
Twenty-three? That's, that's two islands.
Again, I have another idea.
Don't take so long, okay?
How about we put one on either side of the handicap area, and that truly would designate out the handicap area? Keeps the people right out of it. How does that work, Dana?
I think that would work good.
Gavin, you and I are kind of doing the same thing, you're shaking your head up and down. Okay, great, great. I think we're on the same page. Two islands, 10 feet, either side of the handicap. Let's get it written down.
Jimmy, you okay with that?
I trust yours and Dana's judgment on this, you guys are the experts, so I'm going to trust what you guys have to say about that. So yes, I'm good with it if you're good with it.
I mean, I hope you realize, Jim, we're working very hard to try...
Oh, I know that, I know that. No, I appreciate, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and...
And as Dennis said, you know, if it hadn't been for COVID time, this might not even be an issue, but it is what it is.
I do like the idea of just even giving that handicap parking a little bit more.
I do like the idea of, of just even giving that handicap parking a little bit more. You know, a little bit more secure, so.
Sure. That, that's always a nice thing to do. Thank you. All right, moving on, folks. No, Ben. Neither one is here tonight. Um, Gavin, you had some other things you were wondering about. I believe you said.
Uh, sure, yes. On the, um, new plan, it looks like the, uh, water disposal system, well, the upper one in the village area will be the one that's most likely used. Is that correct?
The septic disposal, yes. The most gnarly one will, one behind the, uh, on the north side of the golf course will be a reserve area. Well, either one would require a forced main sewer system to be installed. So we, we made the decision to go with the one further away from the project.
So all water used to clean tunnels will end up in this structure?
Uh, I guess I'm going to have to rely, I've sent that to Jim. I don't know if they're going to be washing. Uh, well, I guess I'll have to have Jim answer that question. I, I don't.
I mean, we're not, we're not doing any, I mean, there'll be times we give dogs a bath, but it's not going to be a, a regular thing, and we're not going to be a grooming service, but, um, I think we chose that one as well, because that would be easier for vehicles to access when, when it has to be maintained.
Ken?
If they did have floor drains, it'd be tied into the septic.
We will not have floor drains.
So Jim, you're not going to have, um, like, someone going into one of these, these houses with a hose and hosing down the floor?
No, it'll, it'll be, it'll be done with a mop. And just clean that way. We're not going to have drains in each floor, in the floors of the, the cabin, in each room.
Right. Okay, Gavin?
Floors will be cement, correct?
They'll be epoxy.
They're, they're going to be slabs.
Okay, and that water will end up in the, in that unit we're talking about?
That's correct.
Water will end up in the unit?
Always water will end up in the septic.
In the septic, in the septic system.
That's where you want it to end up anyway, in a treated area. You don't want it dumped out.
Right, exactly.
It will all go to where it's required.
I don't see how it's getting into the septic without floor drains. Floor drains are permitted, so, I mean, it's, nothing that's a condition or anything like that, so I wouldn't, um.
I'm glad you're bringing that up, Ken.
They want them.
I was, I was glad you're bringing that up, because I was going to ask if it was a condition, because I, I recommend them. It has been discussed, it's not necessary, but I, I definitely recommend them.
I think that's going to be a lot easier than dumping that hairy water down the sink.
Yes, definitely. Jim, anything from you?
Which Jim?
Oh, sorry, no. Mr. Crowley?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything from you?
I'm just listening very closely, uh, because, uh, I like the idea of floor drains, just for ease. But, uh, still not on top of the right thing yet. Still listening.
Okay, we're having a hard time hearing you, because you're moving around a little bit.
Yeah.
Interfering with your speaker.
Excuse me. How was it now?
It has to be something every week.
Well, hey, that's what happens when you, not a computer person. I could basically be, go either direction, uh, in reference, as long as, uh, the board is all, all together on it. I could accept, uh, both proposals, one way or another.
Jim, would you have a problem if we, uh, wanted floor drains in there?
Not at all.
Tom?
A question for whomever might know the answer. What is the, uh, rate, the yearly flood rating? I don't know what that number is all about. We talk about a 25-year storm, et cetera. What, what is the rating, so to speak, of the stormwater management on this stand?
Uh, it, it's, it's designed to the town standards, which is probably a 25-year storm. It's all the DEP requirements, and it's received their permit.
Okay.
Then have a copy of that in your papers you picked up today.
Yeah, that, that drainage report was submitted in the big, the big book that we gave.
It's in the, it's in our, in the big book you have, Tom.
The Spire of Vanuatu.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, exactly. Exactly. All right, have we any other questions on this? Where did we lose? Going through pages, people, sorry. Ken? Are you there?
Yep.
Okay, well, there you are. Thank you. Right. I think perhaps we, uh, want to go through. Now, Ben went through these, didn't he?
Yep, yeah, we pretty much took care of that at the public hearing too prior to.
Public hearing, correct. So he, he went through these, and, um, I don't know how, uh, the board feels about going any further with that. But since our planner went through and if you pull out your papers, you should see that.
Dana, do you just want to take a second and mention the other permits that you were required, your state and federal ones?
Uh, sure. I mean, we, we received the, uh, the state DOT, I mean, a DEP stormwater permit, the Army Corps permit, uh, for the wetland fill, and we're, we're, we've sent off for the entrance permit, and we're waiting for that to come back.
I, I know, but it's very easy to do. It's very easy to do, yeah. Okay. The only one you're waiting for, I'm looking at copies of everything you've given us, and I've got the Army Corps of Engineers, I've got DEP, um, storm, uh, water management. You said the only one you're waiting for is?
The entrance permit.
The entrance permit. Oh, yeah, that's a state road, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And when do you think, uh, when do you feel you should have that?
Uh, state agency, yeah, good question.
Oh, good, yeah. And who's working right now?
I believe they're working, uh, but, uh, you know, that particular person would be coming out of Scarborough. Uh, they usually be responsive, they, usually these things come back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and when did you apply for it?
That was pre-virus, though, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, I got it.
Isn't this something that can be considered conditional?
That's what I'm hoping for.
Me as well.
Just hold on one second, we've mislaid a piece of paper here. And, uh, are, anyone from the board, let me fill some time, have any more, uh, questions?
Jim, do you want to go over hours of operation for the adoption center and the mini golf?
Sorry, could I ask that again, Ken?
Can you go over the hours of operation for the adoption center and the mini golf?
Yeah, the adoption center will most likely be 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 5 o'clock. Mini golf in the spring and of, and the late summer would be probably, um, noon to, to 10. Um, I'm sorry, during the summer, but in the spring, you know, we would probably close by 8 o'clock at night, but, uh, opening at noon, maybe 11 a.m. at the earliest. So the, the times won't overlap. The adoption center, uh, at the most would be probably 9:00 to 5:00, but we're thinking even 9:00 to 4:00.
Now, I know when we talked, you said you were going to have, you would have probably a total of about 48 dogs?
That's, that's maximum, is what we're, we don't anticipate doing that right off the bat. We anticipate.
Yeah, that would be my question, is when you are operational, how many dogs do you think you would be starting with?
Uh, me personally, I'd like to start with two or three, make sure we're doing it right. Um, so, I mean, again, we're going to take it slow.
Yeah.
That'll depend on, um, you know, the time of the year that, that we open as well. So if we're looking at a, an opening next spring, um, hopefully we'll get up and running quickly. But, um, again, we're new at this, so we, we don't know for sure. But again, we want to do it well, so we're going to start slow with a few dogs and make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah, yeah. I, I understand Connecticut sometimes has, has an average, sometimes they have a waiting list for people, which to me would be the best thing going, having people interested and not enough dogs. But, uh, but to have 12, uh, dogs usually seems to be a number that they're pretty, you know, have quite a bit with, so.
Uh, and we're also talking about, you know, quarantine, even though the state requires two to five days, we're, we're talking about quarantining dogs for, for two weeks. So we have to figure out what that flow will actually be, um, if we're going to make it, you know, we want to be more cautious than less cautious.
Right, right. And hopefully by you, by the time you start, you won't have to have employees who are quarantined for two weeks, right?
That's true, that's true, too.
Right, okay. Have we any?
Gavin has had his hand up on and off.
Sorry?
Gavin has had his hand up on and off.
Thank you. Gavin?
Yes, I was just wondering if dogs might arrive earlier than 9 o'clock. You might want to make your hours a little earlier in the day.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Gavin.
Now, these dogs are coming in vehicles from far away. They might arrive at hours between, you know, not between 9:00 and 5:00. Maybe you should make your hours start a little bit earlier for the adoption.
Oh, no. Well, that's, those are the hours for the public. The adoption center, we'll, we'll have employees on at 6:00. The dogs will be started to take care of at 6:00 a.m., um, and there'll be an employee there at least till 9:00 p.m. every night.
Those are the hours we're interested in.
The hours of, of operation that are open to the public would be either 9:00 to 4:00 or 9:00 to 5:00. But yeah, there'll be employees there starting at 6:00 a.m.
Okay, so we got to pin down your hours of operation.
Well, we, I think we have two, two tiers of operation. We have the, the dog rescue, which is not public, and you're saying they will be there from, uh, 6:00 a.m. to roughly 9:00 p.m.
Correct.
And then your open to the public hours would be?
Probably 9:00 to 4:00.
Probably 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now, those, those hours are going to be on your conditional use. So words like probably are a little ambiguous.
Okay, then I, I would say then we would be open 9:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
Open to the public. For the dog rescue.
Okay. But for, I'm going to, I'm, well, actually, I'm calling dog rescue 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
That, that would be fair.
Caring for the dogs.
That would be fair.
Okay. Public hours, 9:00 to 5:00.
Correct.
Okay. And that's the dog, dogs. So, and I'm going to write this down again. Golf, what are we talking about golf, again?
11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
What days?
Seven days a week.
Okay. Uh, and that's, well, it's not year-round, obviously.
Correct. We anticipate opening in probably early April and closing in mid-September. Maybe, and, closing in mid-September.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Hang on, let me get ice cream hours.
Same as the golf.
Okay, you were going to say something, Dennis?
Yes, uh, it, it's really none of my, not my place to tell you when you do operate, but normally around here, uh, at least with the apple orchards and stuff like that, they try to keep things going till, uh, Columbus Day weekend.
That's what I was wondering about, Ken.
And, I mean, obviously, you guys can do what you want, but, um.
No, I mean, I, we, we'd stay open longer if it's possible, but again, we have to see what the ebb and flow is. If, is it, if people, I was kind of basing it off of Ted's ice cream and other areas and, uh, ice cream places in the air, uh, area, so.
I, I just don't want you guys to limit yourself at this point.
Yeah.
Sure, then, then could we, could we change that to Columbus Day weekend?
Ken?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we need a open and close day for the golf. We've got the hours that it's open, and if, uh, if they get lucky and can run it till Columbus Day, it's, 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 you know, just going to be that much better for them.
Hey, Jim, Jim, I hear you, Jim Crowley.
Yes, uh, being in the ice cream business like I was, uh, uh, you definitely want to be open during the foliage hours, uh, the dates of foliage. Uh, that will be a very profitable time period for you. Uh, after the foliage is done, they roll up the sidewalks and actin', and nothing happens.
Fair enough.
You didn't know we had sidewalks.
These will be our first sidewalks.
And I, I would like to amend that, Joyce, and I would just say we would open April through October, and obviously, if we want to close early, we would close earlier.
Yes, I'm going to, some of the weekend lake people, you're going to get them up until Columbus Day weekend. It really would move you to.
Well, I, yeah, I appreciate Dennis saying that, too. You don't want to limit yourself, so, yeah, I would, we would open, uh, April 1st and, and operate the end of October.
Yeah.
And if we close earlier, we close earlier.
Yeah, don't limit yourself, whatever you're, you're doing there. All right. So hours. How many, uh, employees do you have, or think you'll have?
We anticipate on the dog rescue side, we'll have five full-time employees and probably a dozen part-time employees. And then on the seasonal help, it could be anywhere between eight, 12, to, to run the golf course and the ice cream. And they would all be part-time.
Even the dog people?
No, we'd have five full-time people on the dog side and probably nine to 12 part-time people on the dog side. And then for the seasonal help, the April through October, we anticipate 10 to 12 part-time.
Right, right. And like everybody else in the area, you'll be pulling your teeth out when everybody goes back to school.
That is true.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Right. Gavin?
Yes, Joyce, I was wondering about vegetation within the miniature golf area.
The design for that has not been completed. The design will be included within the area that we're showing, but the golf course people are still working on the design. And Jim, if you can pipe in a little bit, because I remember you telling me that, something in between the two. We are, we're planning, it's gonna be an eighteen-hole golf course, but we're going to separate them. So the northern side will have nine holes and the southern side will have nine holes. And we're looking at putting a landscaping with vegetation, trees, to, again, we're trying to be conscious of the environment and whatnot. But we also want it to be a pleasant place for people to relax and whatnot. So we plan on using indigenous plants and trees. And I got some good ideas from the one that's up in San, I can't remember the name of it, but they have one where the place, an ice cream place is right there on, right before you get to Route 202, and they've done a nice job. So we've been kind of looking at using that as a model for that area in between the two courses.
When would you propose to start building that golf course?
It's gonna be part of this, and we're looking to start in, as early as we can in March. It's probably about a three-month process to build that.
So obviously, the rest of it would be built first, and this would come down the road after the winter.
Well, hopefully, yeah. I'll let Scott chime in on this, because he's overseeing how the building project, but just to be able to get the vehicles in and out of there. So that would leave that up to Scott and how that will all play out.
Yes, so we are looking to get the infrastructure in, roads, parking, heavy, the real heavy construction stuff in and underway, starting soon as possible, moving through the winter months, hopefully finishing, we're doing work inside the structures through the winter. And then, of course, spring, whenever that may come in Maine, whether it's March, April, May, who knows? But the golf course would then look to pick up in the spring, which I would have my, you know, infrastructure and the majority of all that heavy work done. And then they come in to work on the golf course. Of course, they need heavy equipment for there as well. So we want to try to do this in a systematic way so that everything kind of works together. So the golf course is still being designed and decided upon, certainly keeping in mind vegetations and keeping it look the part for the area and to handle the water and erosion and so forth is the ultimate goal for the whole project.
Also, I'd like to chime in and say that the drain structures for this project have to be constructed once this thing starts construction.
And that's all part of it as well, they would be done.
Right.
So eighteen holes, huh?
Eighteen holes.
With a few dog legs, I imagine.
A lot of dog legs.
I see, I see. Interesting, okay. Leslie, anything? Hello, Leslie? Did I lose Leslie?
No, I muted myself for a minute. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay. Tom, Mr. Cashin?
I'm all set, Joyce, thank you.
Okay, Ken?
Uh, I think just going over some of the stuff we've discussed, the exterior lighting will be shielded and hoods on all of that. The maximum candle watt is point five at the property line. The sound decibels, maximum sixty decibels during the day, fifty at night, at the property line as well, maximum forty-eight dogs. Hours of operation, nine to five was the adoption center, and employees were six to nine, six a.m., nine p.m. Ice cream was eleven to ten. We have a, we're waiting on an approved DOT permit as a condition.
Right.
Employees, five full-time with the dog, twelve part-time, and mini golf had twelve part-time. And I think that was the major part of all of that.
Right.
Quick question for Dana or Jim?
Go ahead, Tom.
Is there any proposal for the miniature golf area that is going to be necessitating, you know, canned music and/or some other kind of bells and whistles? It may not be an issue.
Uh, I'm gonna have to let Jim answer that question. I guess, I'm not sure I understand the question. What are you asking, Tom?
Well, are you proposing any kind of canned music and/or other bells and whistles that maybe is sourced from?
No. We're gonna be very conscious of the noise and the light and try to keep that to the minimum as best we can.
Great, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Joyce, Scott has his hand up.
Scott, thank you very much, Dan. Scott?
Yes, I just wanted to point out, Ken, you mentioned shielded lights. They're not necessarily shielded, the design was a downlight. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
I would imagine the downlight would have a hood on it or something that's facing it down, and that would, I would imagine by design, that is a shield or a hood.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that. That is correct.
I have one other safety-related question for you. With the number of people that you may, we all have our fingers crossed, get through there, and with, particularly with the ice cream and the golf, are you going to have, you know, AEDs there? Can you have some people trained in that sort of thing?
Yeah, we're probably gonna have every employee trained for CPR with AED training.
With AED training, you'll have one on site?
Yes.
Good, good. That's so important nowadays, very good.
It is.
So I added AED and Knox box to the list then?
Yeah. Right, and a Knox box, of course. Now, the sign on 109, that's going to be wood and brick construction with a shingled roof, is that correct?
Correct. I have that right here.
Wasn't there brick involved with that?
I don't think there's brick, but I think we're gonna put landscaping stone around the bottom of it.
Stone, okay, the picture, I couldn't really tell.
Yeah, it would be, that's landscaping. It probably wouldn't be brick, it'd probably be stone.
Stone. And it's going to be illuminated, I understand.
Yes, from the top down. So it'll be under the hood, so it'll flash down on the light as opposed to on-
So the hood is like this, and the light's coming down from underneath?
Correct.
To the sign. Visible north and south?
Uh, yes. And that way, you know, in the winter, the snow won't cover that light, so it would stay lit.
Right. Okay.
And I assume everything's underground utility, all the mini golf, the lighting out for the sign, everything's underground?
Yes.
We had talked last time about talking to DOT, see if they would put up a sign on both sides of that entrance. Is that something that, do we still want to do or have done?
I think, yeah, at the last meeting, we were more than willing to put a sign on either side of the entrance, up the road or down the road, turning traffic only. It's something that, I don't know that the applicant can contact DOT or if it has to come from the town.
The applicant can.
Applicant.
Okay, that's fine, then we'll make that contact.
If they say no, I guess it's no, but.
If they say no, let us know.
Again, that's up to them.
Right, it is, it's a state road. If they say no.
We may go.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
You'll have to go through the Department of Transportation for any sign that is posted on the side of the road. They will handle it. So, have you had your site review already?
No, that's, the entrance permit has been applied for, and not come to the site yet.
Okay, when they come to your site, you want to speak to the engineer that's coming out and request at that time, having signs put up. They will take care of that for you, as long as you do it at that point in time.
We'll probably have to call them, because these entrance permits, the engineer just goes to the site at his convenience. He doesn't notify us that he's going there.
Yeah.
Well, they do what he's gotta do, and then the permit shows up in the mail.
Yeah.
Give him a- Go ahead, Jim.
You probably want to touch base with DOT. I don't know what they're doing in the coronavirus time period, but you want to be there and discuss with them and tell them what you have and what you're gonna have for signs, because they're gonna have a lot of questions for you. And that's the time period that you want to have, speak to them about traffic signs up your property, both north and south. We had to go through all that with the Smiths Red Apple Farm, putting crosswalks in and all that, you know, because we're on both sides of the road. And they also, to put us any type of sign in, they would have to do it. So I would recommend that you mention it to them when they come out and somebody be there. You just want to do this once, you don't want to have them come back three, four times and have nobody there, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I nominate Scott to meet DOT.
I second that nomination.
The DOT came out the last time for Wild Willys, two years ago, and they got their permit after, after the site inspection within five days. So it doesn't take, it doesn't take long once they come out and look at it. And I, the only thing I would say is that you have your site distance on both directions, so you shouldn't have any problems or issues getting your permit.
So Dana and Scott, you would be a good person to be there, so, you know, give it some thought. Dana, twist his arm.
I will.
There you go, there you go.
If it doesn't work, I will.
There you go. Have we anything else tonight, ladies and gentlemen?
I would like to be able to vote on this and put this behind us.
I agree to that.
It's Jim. Well, let's see what you've got.
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan application for dog rescue and sanctuary, mini golf course and ice cream shop, Grammy Rose LLC, Route 109, Map 233, Lot 04.
I'll second that. With the following conditions?
With the following conditions, that were listed.
Okay. We have a second from Leslie. Is there any discussion?
Joyce, do you want to go through findings of fact on this?
We went through those. Ken, when did we go through those? With Ben?
Yeah, with that review process, we had that done.
Yeah. That's why we have the consultant now.
Okay, so that's probably a Ben Smith mail-in?
Correct. Are there any other, any further discussion?
I see no hands up, Joyce.
Thank you very much, Dan.
We will produce the findings of fact. The conditions will be laid out on the permit, and then the findings of fact will all be on that as well, too.
All as well. There are no other, no other hands for discussion. We'll take the vote. Leslie? Yes. Jim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Share votes in the affirmative. Okay, gentlemen, you have your additional use, your site plan review and additional use permit with conditions. Give us a few days. We will have to have the rest of the copies of your DOT permit. All of those things will have to come to us. I know they won't all be here tomorrow, but we will need copies of all of those things. So please make sure we get those, because we will be holding on to everything. We need, Ken, how many site plans do we need, my lot, or do we?
I don't think we need a my lot, we'll just take three copies. We'll keep one here, and then you guys can have two for your records.
Okay.
And we'll sign that once we get DOT permit.
Yeah, we'll sign off on all of those once that's done.
So, could somebody just email me the list of conditions so that I make sure that they make it to the plan?
Yep.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Is there anything else we can do for y'all?
Thank you very much for all your time and effort. I know this was a big thing to review and crazy time, so I just hope you realize how much we appreciate you guys working with us.
Well, we wish you the best of luck and much success in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep your neighbors happy.
We will.
Yes, you have some very nice neighbors, and we really don't want to hear from them, unless they're telling us about the nice dog they got from you.
Fair enough.
Okay, very good. Good night, Kevin. Have a good evening. Oh, come on. Whose is that barking?
That's my dog's.
Obviously, he's-
That's my doorbell going off.
I see, all right, all right. We have no new business at this meeting. We have pending projects with no action taken at this meeting. York County Agricultural Association, application for an extended parking lot. And Martella Estates, as she knows, coming up for a public hearing. We have a report from the CEO, and then I have a word or two for you.
I did speak with York County Agricultural, one of the people on the board down there to get that back on the agenda. Due to the fullness of the agenda, we couldn't get him on anyway, so I think we'll be seeing him in the next couple of weeks.
Good, good. Is that, I don't want to cut you off, is that everything? Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have information that is coming in very late, five o'clock in the afternoon. There's no way to have gotten it to you since, for you, don't have email. It is important that you get this, I want you to have it. It is important that you get this. I want you to have it. There will be copies at the office. We did have offer to, you know, well, tell them they can go to the library and use the computer, to which I did say, well, I've got people who are, don't use a computer, and they don't know how to use a computer, and they have no interest in doing that. So hard copies will be available to you, maybe sometime tomorrow. If not tomorrow, it'll be Monday. I have to look at my schedule tomorrow. I really do have things to do, other things to do, but this, and, but you will have everything you need and need to know. Monday is not really open, but, well, Monday's not open, so I will make sure that you have it. It will be at the office tomorrow, and it is up to you whether you pick it up tomorrow or on Monday.
This is in reference to what?
This is in reference to Martella Estates. So, you know, you, you can pick that up and see what it's all about, and we'll go from there.
Christina's there from 9 to 4 tomorrow?
Yeah, 9 to 4 tomorrow.
Thank you.
Don't, I, I won't be bringing anything there much before 11 o'clock, though. I just quickly looked at my phone and my calendar, and 11 would be the earliest I could get there. So it will be there. It is up to you to pick it up tomorrow or Tuesday when it's open. I just want you all to know that, you know, there is information waiting for you. If I got it before 5 o'clock on a Thursday, you'd have had it sooner, but that was it. So, anyway, thank you all for all your time and effort and energy. We have had talk, there was talk with the selectmen last night. They are going to start allowing some meetings, some committees to meet together, but with the amount of people we usually have at ours, our meetings are too large to meet at the town hall yet. At the most, we could have 30 people. Tonight, there were over 24, I guess, or 21. Dan, how many people tonight?
At the maximum, I think I saw 24 or 25.
24, 25. That's, you know, that takes us right out of the water. We can't do that. So we will still be meeting via Zoom, and that's probably gonna go through August, and we'll reconsider in August. If you watch the Board of Selectmen, one idea was floated last night from one of the members, that perhaps, you know, we would, could meet at the school or something like that. But as of now, I, I mean, I, I don't want to put anything or say anything about what the school might or might not want to do, because they'd have to clean after us. But, so we will be meeting by Zoom at least through August. Starting in August, we're going back to biweekly meetings. Is that right, biweekly? Yeah, biweekly meetings.
Twice a month.
Oh, twice a month. Okay, there you go. Meetings. First and third Thursday. We will also be starting our workshops. As you know, our workshops will be on Wednesday at noon time. And our workshops are open to anybody who can make it. These are not meetings, we don't vote. We work on ordinances, we work on policies, we work on things like that. We, and I, I know we are all on a 30-day extension. We have to move forward as if we're all moving forward, and that's what we're going to do. We're gonna move forward. So those are our forward plans. I hope you all can approve. I do want to bring up one other thing. If in fact, our next meeting, public hearing, is as large as some of us expect it to be, it is possible that it can go into a two-day meeting, which would be a two-week, or this weekend, you know, two weeks later. It can go on for more than one day. And if that is the case, that's exactly what's gonna happen. We're not gonna, you know, be knocking our heads together exhausted at 11, 12 o'clock at night. So just so you all are prepared for that.
Are we gonna be putting on time limits on speaking?
We'll talk about that later. I have been speaking to people about things like that, and everybody is going to get a chance to speak. And about all, you know, we'll say about that tonight, everybody will have a chance to speak, pro and con, and, you know, we're just, we're gonna play it fairly with every other, you know, hearing that we've had. We, 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 we want to get and we need to know what people are thinking. And the only way to do that is to listen. Yes, Gavin?
In terms of the workshops, will they be held in person or on the Zoom platform?
Ken and I have to discuss that. And particularly, yes, Ken?
Can we afford to have Gavin turn a light on next meeting? He looks like he's in the dark.
Gavin, before, when you were frozen, I said you looked like a, a painting like Michelangelo. You look like you're out of the Last Supper right now, in the, with the dark and everything around you. I mean, it's, it makes quite a picture, so.
Fantastic compliments, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Really quite something, I must say. But you all have in your books a copy of, from MMA on procedures, and we will be following those procedures. So could I please have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Gavin?
He's left already.
And Leslie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Very good. We are adjourned. Gavin, could you hold on one second?